It's quite, it's quite awesome.
I would like to call to order the Wednesday, October 20th, 2021, regular city council meeting. The city council chambers is open to the public at 100% capacity pursuant to executive order N 29-20 issued by Governor Gavin Newsom. The public will have the option to call 1-425-436-6335, passcode 5290024, to provide public comment. Written comments needed to be submitted by mail or email to abigailpelsgard@cityofkingsburg-ca.gov. The cutoff for written comments was yesterday at 4:00. They will not be read aloud. Tonight, we have our invocation given by Pastorial Minister John Palm, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, Pastor Palm.
Father, I just want to pray for the council members in front of me, Lord. That's Lauren North, Vince Palamar, Michelle Roman, Brandon Purcell, Jewel Hurtado, and the city manager, Alex Henderson. And, Lord, I just pray because I believe you said, Lord, that you wanted me to remind them of their calling. God, you have called them. You have set these people, Lord, above our city in the sense of saying, bringing things to you and just saying, God, how do you want us to organize our city? How do you want us to provide guidance? Father, I thank you for their calling. I thank you that you have spoken each one of them to bring to this city the things that will cause our city to come together and to be strong and capable in the ways that you have built it to be. And, Lord, you have made their, their ability to be sons and daughters of yours. Or you have given them that as an opportunity for them. And I pray for them to know that and to walk in that kind of confidence, God, that you hear them, you know them, you love them. Lord, you have set them apart to be, to be the leaders, to be the provision, those who provide for the guidance and direction of our city. And, God, I just thank you for that, that you care that way for them. And, Father, you are revealing for who you, to us, who you really are as well. Father, the last thing I want to pray for is that we can develop as a city council, but all of us who are citizens of this, of this city, Lord, a culture of honor and a culture of blessing. Because to me, Lord, those two things really set us apart to be people who follow after your own ways. So, God, thank you, and I pray all these things now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Councilmember Palamar?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Purcell Jr.?
Here.
Councilmember Roman?
Here.
Mayor North?
Here. Thank you. Item number two is to approve our agenda. So I will need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, we have three presentations tonight. Our first one, item 3.1, is the introduction of our new community development director, Holly Owen, and that will be done by our city manager, Alexander Henderson.
Madam Mayor, Madam Council, thank you. Ms. Owen, if you'd come up, please. I am happy to be reintroducing you to Holly Owen, this time as our Director of Community Development. She will serve as the lead planner and oversee building and development functions, which is a vital role given the continued investment of both commercial and residential building in Kingsburg over the last few years. Holly previously worked with Kingsburg as a contract planner in 2014, 2016. She left to take a full-time position with the City of Solvang in 2016, which completed her California Scandinavian employment.
I think so.
Recently worked for the County of Santa Barbara. Her previous experience with Kingsburg and the fact that she is Swedish brought her back to Kingsburg to continue the tradition of thought and planning. Holly has her BA from St. Olaf College. In her spare time, enjoys traveling the western US in her teardrop trailer. Please help us welcome Holly Owen.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Good God, have you back, Holly.
Item 3.2, introduction of our Neighborhood Improvement Officer, Madeline Ramirez, also introduced by our city manager. You can move it down.
It's fine. The next one's gonna have to bring it up anyway.
We're also excited tonight to introduce our new Neighborhood Improvement Officer, Madeline Ramirez. Madeline works part-time in our Community Development Department. In her role, she works with all city departments to help coordinate our code enforcement efforts, ensuring we maintain our reputation as a well-maintained community. Madeline has a BA degree from San Jose State College in Behavioral Science and over 25 years of administrative work experience. She has worked for the Santa Clara Valley Water District, the IRS, Seniors First, Baby's IRS, and the Union City Chamber of Commerce. She's been a volunteer for numerous organizations and causes, and enjoys gardening in her free time. Please help us welcome Madeline.
Welcome, Madeline. Thank you. Item 3.3, Public Service Award Presentation, Police Officer Jennifer Villanueva. If you can come on up. Right up to the middle. Jennifer, I offer congratulations on your nomination and award for the Employee Recognition Program with the City of Kingsburg. Kingsburg is a wonderful community that is maintained through the hard work of our citizens, volunteers, and employees. Please accept congratulations from the city council and myself. We sincerely thank you for your hard work that you have given in keeping our community a safe place to live, work, and play. Having dedicated individuals such as yourself gives Kingsburg an invaluable asset, especially when it involves interacting with the public, training new officers, and being a frontline representative of the police department and our organization. You were nominated and selected by your peers for your professionalism and dedication to the department and city. One example given in your nomination was working with an elderly citizen who was the victim of graffiti vandalism and vandalism on her fence. You not only coordinated the removal of the paint by police explorers, but you personally paid for the paint remover. Your efforts do not go unnoticed, as you have been assigned as the field training officer responsible for training newly hired officers and instilling a positive attitude to benefit Kingsburg. Again, thank you and congratulations.
All right, you ready? One, two, three. Let me take one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations, sis.
Congratulations, your council. I'll just shake your hands after you do that. Congratulations.
Okay, I'm gonna take two. So the first one, one, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
In all the time I've seen her, I don't think I've ever seen her not smiling. Big smile. Item four is public comments. This is the time for any citizen to come forward and address the city council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker, and I just want to remind the public that city council is not allowed to respond to anything that you bring forward during this time. We'll start in council chambers, and then we'll go to the phone. Do we have anyone in council chambers that would like to make a public comment at this time? Come on up to the microphone, state your name, and if you're a resident of Kingsburg. You can move the mic if you need to.
Thank you. My name is Debbie Hawkins, and I am a resident of Kingsburg. So, good evening. I want to clarify, because you may, some of you may have heard this. It was on the previous agenda. The difference between the last meeting agenda it was on and tonight is a previous meeting, we didn't have a cause for what the lien was. Tonight, we have that information. So it's one and the same lien, just tonight we have more information on it. Okay? The time that, I'm sorry, I am so nervous.
That's okay. Let's take a deep breath.
I received information on the lien that I wasn't previously aware of when our property went into escrow and I was refinancing. So, I talked to the city, and the information for why there was a lien placed on the property was not readily available. So the city had to do some research, and I did some research as well. The other reason I was not here, it communicated to me in the beginning that this was a closed session, so I'm here now. So my question is, when you met and there was a ruling, what's the protocol as far as with that ruling? Do you notify me? Do I come to you? How do I know how that ruling went? Again, I had no knowledge of any obligations being owed to the city, being attached to my property until recently, when I was refinancing. So I'm questioning, or asking the city, can you provide me with any evidence that I was notified of past due fines or fees prior to a lien being recorded against my property? And will the city provide me with copies of all communications and documents regarding this lien? Also, can the city explain what the amount is owed for? I've contacted the city multiple times, and I still haven't gotten clear clarification on what the fees are specifically. I spoke to Mr. Dunwell, who was attorney for the city at the time, and he stated that it was too old, the case was too old, the file was too old, and he no longer had information for that. I do know that this was an upkeep ordinance, but I'm requesting more specificity as to what was done on September 25th, 2012, for $8,717.80. So, in closing, it is unjust to encumber property without notice and without due cause. If the city cannot prove they conformed with lien notification requirements, then I should not be harmed by additional penalties, interest, and the cost of the legal encumbrance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in chambers that would like to address the council during public comment? Okay, we will open it up to the phone lines. If there is anyone that is on the phone line that would like to make a public comment of any item that is not on the agenda tonight, now is your turn. Hearing none, we will close public comment, and we will move on to item number five, which is Consent Calendar. These are items that are considered routine in nature and are placed on Consent Calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. I do know that we have 5.1 through 5.9 tonight, and I do believe we have some items that are going to be pulled. We will start with our attorney first. Mike?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We request that items 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6 be removed from the consent calendar. There are some revisions that need to be made to the documents associated with those items, and that they will be brought back to you on the agenda ahead of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other items that need to be pulled or?
I'd like to pull 5.9.
Okay, 5.9. Any other items? Okay, so I will need a motion to approve 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.7, and 5.8.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will now discuss 5.9.
So I just wanted to pull this for just council language. In specifically the minimum qualifications, it says you need 30 units of college for the police recruitment position, which I wanted to suggest the council chiefs open to it, to allow there to be a waiver specifically with the minimum requirements to remove the 30 units, with the exception for people that have successful military completion. I just don't want to see somebody who just gets out of the military who has no college that goes straight into the police, having a discipline. So, it's something that, I think it's important, obviously, except for council, ultimately, to decide, chief, if you're amenable to it. This is an additional thing. I know that there's ways to get waivers moderately, even the way that it's written. And I know that the chief's doing a phenomenal job recruiting. I just want to see if there's a way we can remove. Actually, leave it, leave that 30 units off for people that are successfully out of the military with a honorable discharge. There's a way to waive the 30 college units as a requirement.
Chief?
I'm on the spot, chief.
Good evening. Yeah, absolutely would be in favor of that. Didn't craft this to exclude that because, you know, my discussion with the city manager, he has the ability to waive, so if I did find a recruit who didn't have that 30 college unit and was from the military, which I'm recruiting one right now, as a matter of fact, they would be included. But to have that specifically, have language specific to military service would be just fine with me. So, if it works, if it works for the council, we'll just write in, we'll write in language for a waiver for, you know, honorable military service as an exception to that.
That's also before council opens. I know, and I'll speak to the chief, the way that he's recruiting this one, it's out for small towns, and he's doing great job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, so we will need, I think you, chief, we'll need a motion for 5.9 with that additional language. Is that correct, Mike? Okay.
Yeah, make the motion. I'll make the motion with the chief, just to have the discharge.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Do we need to do anything for 5.4 through 5.6 to continue it? Okay.
This is pulled.
Okay. We will move on to Regular Calendar, 6.1, AB 361, Future Council and Committee Meeting Format, Staff Report by City Clerk Abigail Pelsgard, as well as the presentation.
Good evening, council members. Mayor North, I present to you tonight information regarding California Assembly Bill 361. AB 361 allows local jurisdictions to attend meetings virtually with relaxed Brown Act conditions. Council has the option to do all virtual meetings, not the hybrid that we've been doing where some people are here in person, and then other people are able to call in from wherever their location is. If council so chooses to switch to all virtual meetings, so nobody would be in the council chambers, staff would bring a resolution for adoption in accordance of AB 361 to allow for relaxed noticing of members' locations and extended virtual public comment. The council will be required to adopt a similar resolution every 30 days as long as the council conducts all virtual meetings. The other option council has is to continue to meet in person, which will require compliance with all Brown Act requirements, including providing notice of the physical location of any council member that must participate virtually to allow for public comment at that location. So it would go back to, if somebody was going to be out of town, then we would put the address of where they would be at on the agenda, and it'd have to be open to the public to allow public to come over and speak. Yeah, that's how it was before COVID. So, council also has the option to continue to allow for public to call in the public line. If the public line is used, it must remain open for comments on any item. Comments allowed by the public at the meeting, not just the public comment at the beginning of the meeting. For that reason, the city attorney suggests eliminating the phone line if council elects to stay with in-person meetings. If the council elects to continue the phone line, council should adopt a procedure for phone line participation. Neither AB 361 nor the Brown Act specifically addresses the public's use of a phone line to comment during in-person meetings. Live streaming of the meetings will continue regardless of the decision to meet virtually or in person. So what staff is asking for is direction to either draft a resolution switching to virtual, all virtual meetings under AB 361, or continue with the in-person meeting in compliance with all Brown Act requirements. And then we're also asking for directions regarding the public phone line.
Thank you. Okay, so do you have any questions for Abby before we discuss? Okay, so let's discuss it first, and then we'll open it up for public comment. Is anyone wanting to move totally to virtual again? No? Are you? Well, no, everybody else said no. Everybody else said no. Do you want, do you want to move totally to virtual again?
No.
Okay. So that eliminates one option. So that means we want to meet in person. So then the second option, or the second thing we need to discuss is phone lines. Do we want to either eliminate phone lines? Leave them open? Leave them open and come up with a policy? Those are our options?
If we leave them open, there are two options. Either we don't have anymore, or we leave it open.
And come up with a policy. Okay, and so open just means like you don't turn it off, right?
I would, I would unmute it, like when you call public comment for each item. It's a little bit different because you could see people in the council chamber to comment in person, but for each item on the agenda, you would open it for public comment, and I would unmute the public line.
Is there an amount of time that you have to wait for? So when you open the phone line from the state agenda item, like after this, you would hold it open? Is there a certain amount of time you have to leave it on? Or is it just if you hear no one, you move on?
I thought it was 15 minutes, wasn't it?
Yeah.
15 minutes?
We would, that's only for all virtual, so you guys just already decided that we're gonna be in person, so we wouldn't have to do the 15 minutes or?
There's also a third option, though. There's the hybrid, too. So it'd be all here, or if somebody was sick or out, they could call in. So that's another piece of the, of AB 361.
But if you, if you're, if you're doing all attendance, then you have, then the, the changes to the Brown Act as it relates to being out of council chambers doesn't apply. And so we would have to comply with the Brown Act if you were meeting in person and somebody was meeting, was going to attend a meeting outside of the council chambers. So that's the main difference, is that we had some flexibility with the Brown Act before that, but under, under this new legislation, it's either or.
Because all the committees and boards that I serve on, we are going into, they all decided to continue on doing a, staying on Zoom, but there is an option to come in person. So you have a choice of coming in person or staying on Zoom, is how they're doing it. And so we've got people who, for health reasons, are staying on the Zoom, and if you can attend, they want you to attend. So we have a hybrid of the two. And with that, if that's the case, then that, the phone line comes into play because you're gonna have people who can call in. If you're coming to all person, then we didn't have a phone line. If you were in person, then people have the opportunity, because we're at 100% capacity, they can come in and speak to us in person. So that's.
But there is no hybrid option?
I don't read, I don't read the legislation as providing that type of hybrid options. Like Fresno, the city council in Fresno, they would let it go all virtual, for right now, as I understand.
This county council said we could do hybrid with COG and like FCR TA, and that's what we're doing. Yeah, so I.
Would that be because it's, you're, the decision is virtual, but you have the option of coming in person and Zooming, just like we did during the main part of it? It's kind of reverse?
Right.
So it wouldn't be what we're saying?
When the member says, I'm not gonna do virtual, I want to come in, the rules would still be all virtual.
Exactly.
I want to come in, I must.
And do it on the, and?
We do follow the, we're gonna have to follow the virtual rules, no matter, so whether you're in person or not, because of that. And then we have to every 30 days. We also have to keep declaring the proclamation that we're gonna continue on being at this approach during the Zoom and following AB 361. So every 30 days, it's not like a one time, this is what we're gonna do. So if that's the case, you have to declare it every 30 days. So we're having special meetings be called to keep going, so it's, it's a lot of work.
We keep doing, it's like we kind of had already decided in a way, if we do all in person, we don't have to keep declaring anything, right? Okay, perfect. I have a question about, let's say I get sick, and I want to call into the meeting because I can, but you said I have to pose, so I would be at home.
Right, so we would.
So inviting people to come to my home? Wow, that's how it was before? I didn't know that. Okay, well.
We just were homesick and didn't participate. Yeah, we were just absent.
Oh, okay.
We just be absent, but if you want to participate under the Brown Act, you have to.
With AB 361, you didn't, you don't have to. So if you did declare that we wanted to go back to Zoom, you don't have to do it under AB 361.
Madam Mayor, I think one difference from what COG and them are doing, they're doing the all-virtual option, but I don't believe it's open to the public.
True.
So those, those locations are not open to the public, and so you're giving the option to the members, so you're giving the option to council members. You guys have made a decision that if you're going to meet in person and allow the chambers to be open to the public, then that's where you have to revert back to the old Brown Act rules. If you do the all-virtual option, you're making a finding every 30 days that, for health and safety reasons, you're not going to be open to the public. Now, you individually could decide to come in here and meet in person, but then, that's why we would have to leave the phone line open because there's not then an option for the public to come in and speak. Whereas if you're meeting in person, you're following the old Brown Act rules and being open to the public, then you don't necessarily need the phone line because the option is here for people to come in and speak. That's the, that's the hybrid, I guess, difference.
And no matter what, we're gonna keep the.
The live?
The Facebook live going, so even if we're back in person, you know, and we decide to go that route, and we're open at 100% capacity, that option will still be going.
Correct. If you want to keep the phone line, that becomes a decision of this council as opposed to the state legislation, and that's what we're suggesting, that you would then establish procedures for how to operate the phone line to allow people to participate, if you wanted to continue to do that. Our suggestion is maybe you don't, just because we go over open to the public now and they can come in.
I have a question about the livestream. So I remember in the past when we had discussed starting a livestream and having that kind of interaction with the public, it was said that those comments are not. Right, they're not monitored, and they're not public comment. But do we have to have that section set up? I'm just wondering, because I remember at League of Cities, when we were discussing, what is public comment? What is a public platform for, you know? Can you, I mean, it doesn't bother? But I would hope that people don't think that we're reading those. You know, and I know it says a disclaimer on there, but if they just couldn't comment, it might just.
So are you suggesting?
Yeah, right, because we can control that. Like, there is no comments here, you can watch. So there's no misunderstanding that we're not seeing them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but if you're talking about, are you talking about removing the ability to comment?
On the livestream, only. Like, not regular. Right.
Specifically, does the government decide?
Yeah, our understanding is, is that a government site basically is a public forum. So similar to someone coming in here and being able to speak, um, like they can do the same on the page, which is why we put the disclaimer during the meetings that.
We're not reading.
We're not monitoring them during the meetings or, you know, taking questions from there during the meetings. I don't know about, I'd have to look into more about limiting the comments during those specific.
It's not a pressing issue. I just, I feel people sometimes might think that, oh, well, they're seeing this or they're hearing this and aren't they answering my concern? I don't want anybody to feel that way. You can just call in or come in. We can't see those comments until after. We'll see them, but it wasn't in the discussion.
They're fun to read. They're fun to read.
I think my, my only complaint that I have about the live stream that I've had since the beginning is that it's only on Facebook. And if you don't have Facebook, then you can't see what's going on. So it would be nice if we had a different, more public platform that people could see the live stream or.
On the website?
Later on. YouTube or something, something that people can access easier. I know that's, we, I know why we started in that of the necessity. This has been an easy, relatively easy, I mean, I know it's worked really hard on this. But I've said to people, you know, we, you can go back and, you know, watch one later and they go, I don't have Facebook. So if you don't have Facebook, that's, so we are limiting a, a huge group of people in Kingsburg that do not have Facebook.
I don't have Facebook and I watch the meetings. I watch them sometimes on the Kingsburg website. You can watch them. You watch them, yeah.
So tonight we have two things right now that we need to decide. Uh, do we need to make a motion about being in person as the first thing? Okay, so in person, we've, we've discussed that and decided that. So I'll need a motion to make meetings back in person and not virtually?
That motion to go back a hundred percent in person with open to capacity for, um, public to come in.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So then the second thing that we have to talk about is the phone line. Um, so our options are to close it or to keep it open and make a policy. So those are the two options. Um, anyone leaning either way?
We're going to be open at a hundred percent capacity, then people should come.
I agree.
Nothing precludes someone from writing.
Yes.
Yes.
So it's not like you, you can't make it, you know you can't make it. We're not saying the rocket here comment, you just have to write it in.
And we do read.
Yes, pre, pre pandemic.
And those we do read.
We do understand that people can't make it, people have other obligations. So you can write in. I think that if we leave the phone lines open all the time, it's just going to be very disruptive. Throughout the entire meeting.
I agree.
But we don't leave it on the entire, like unmute. Has to be, because we do take public comment in between agenda items.
It will be on every.
So you don't unmute like how you usually do it? You don't unmute it and then ask for public comment?
They could hear us.
Right.
The kids with background noise. Comment, I, I unmute them so they could speak. And then I mute it again so there's no background sound and then.
So wait, ba, so basically what you do right now to unmute it and.
But it would be every item. So like every item on consent calendar, correct? We'd have to go item by item, every, or just consent? I agree, um, with people can come in person or write in, like pre-pandemic. What are?
I personally really like the phone line option.
I'm gonna get his phone line. Cut it off.
So do we need to make a motion? Okay, so either way, I'll need someone to make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. That's all you needed from us, right, Abigail? Okay. Item six point two, Smith Street Public Parklet Discussion Staff Report and Presentation by City Manager Alexandra Henderson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Uh, city staff has received a proposal and request from an existing property owner, uh, Deaf Development to utilize city right of way to construct an outdoor dining sitting space, um, or parklet on the west side of Smith Street, just north of Draper Street. The proposed parklet would be open to the public and maintained and cleaned by the adjacent property owner and or their designee. While full details of the design, materials and potential, potential conditions of approval remain, the repo, the proposal requires council approval to utilize the city right of way to install the improvement. The construction of the parklet would be completed by the applicant. The applicant recently renovated the long vacant Woods Apparel Building, which now houses Casaros and is in the process of renovating the rear of the building for, uh, Roadhouse ninety-nine Restaurant. The city has other similar locations, including outside of Fugazi's Restaurant on Draper Street in the alley, as well as the main salon on Draper Street. Outdoor dining has been a focal point of downtown revitalization efforts and became more popular during the COVID nineteen pandemic. The council eased restrictions on the use of public space temporarily to support local restaurants. Outdoor dining was also identified as an opportunity as part of an in-depth, in-depth strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis performed by the Community Planning Assistance Team as part of their revitalization strategy for downtown Kingsburg report. While the proposal does not include the removal of any existing diagonal parking spaces, it would require the relocation of a designated bus parking location. In addition, staff would ensure the parklet and adjacent sidewalk will comply with ADA regulations, be cleaned regularly, and provide an aesthetic component to the space. The applicant has indicated they will utilize landscaping, shade sails and lighting to soften the space. The current design is proposed at seventy-five feet by eighteen feet and has space for up to eighty seats. Uh, the, uh, staff is recommending, uh, support for the application for the installation of a permanent public parklet, uh, subject to conditions of approval, uh, set by staff. Um, and the applicant is here this evening, uh, to answer, uh, questions that you may have. Um, there is, uh, a site plan, uh, and some, um, elevations included. Parklets there. Were there other elevations?
Yeah.
Included?
Is it like, uh, you sent me today, Steve?
Yes. So that concludes my report, but, uh, certainly happy to answer any questions and obviously the applicant's here as well if there are additional questions from the council.
Council discussion, do we have any discussion on this item? Any questions for that applicant?
I think this area is going to be, you're taking a, an area right outside of that Woods Building right there, Roadhouse, and creating a, a really nice destination for people to go to. Right now, it's just, you know, bus parking, which doesn't get utilized and there is still bus parking over here. Um, but that whole area with Casaros now, Roadhouse, and then across the street, you've got the bakery and the creamery. That whole area has just become a really great hub, uh, a, a destination of, of dining and I think outdoor entertainment. And I think how they've done it in the front there at Casaros and now over here. And like they said, any of those restaurants that anybody can utilize them, just like the other places that we have in town. Those are the things that we've been wanting for our downtown area for a very long time. So I think it's wonderful to see. First of all, the building coming back. It's been sitting vacant way too long and just see it utilized in this way. And using, using the spaces that you have is wonderful. So thanks for investing in our area, downtown area.
Any other council discussion?
I really like this plan. Um, I, I love that. Um, we are just, like you just said, enhancing the area. I don't want to, it'd be the same thing, enhancing that area. It's going to just be a nice addition to the downtown. And, um, I appreciate it being brought forward, um, and every, all the answers, kind of just being there for us. I don't have any questions. It looks good.
I think with COVID too, you know, everybody wanted to be able to eat outside, support local businesses. And this is another way, you know, when we've been, if you've traveled around, you've seen these parklets at other places, some good, some aren't as good. And other cities where this is going to be beautiful for our city. You guys have done a good job.
I, go ahead. Hi, Steve.
I'm Steve Safar. I just wanted to point out that this whole parklet is not going, we're not going to be drilling into this, to the existing street. There's no, um, it, it is actually going to be portable, but it's going to be so heavy, you're not going to realize it's portable. So if someday the city says, uh, we don't want this anymore, it's going to be easily removed. We haven't torn up the street. We haven't done anything. We're not, we're not doing anything with the flow of the water, uh, at the gutter system. That will all be underneath there. So that all will be done and, and we're, the architect is very much aware of the ADA, uh, need and that the city will monitor that. And the only other thing, these drawings did not show, we are incorporating landscaping out in that area also. Um, he misunderstood and he put it on that, on the private property. But, uh, it will also include, uh, some trees that will also be portable and be willing to, um, that will be in boxes. I think they're five foot by five foot boxes and move, movable with a forklift type of thing. So would, I apologize if those renderings didn't show the, the landscaping, but we feel like the green spaces is also very important in this whole project. And I'm available to answer any other questions. Thank you.
So everyone understands too, that's not taking away any parking spaces in the downtown area as well. They're already with the, that was bus parking. So nobody was able to park there anyway. So taking that footprint up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of, of us are against it, you know? It's what we've wanted for revitalization of Kingsburg.
It's beautiful. Some of the discussion I had, um, with the applicant the other day was also that if you go in that area at night, my husband and I realized when we were at the creamery, it's, it's really dark. And so we were talking about lighting right over there. And then the second thing that we were talking about is, um, T-Mobile put out a hometown grant. And it's for things exactly like this, up to fifty thousand dollars. So, um, I did send that to him, you know, as, as, um, an option also. So tonight you just need a motion to move forward with this? Is that what we need?
Just allowing the use of the space, the city space.
I'll probably make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item. Six point three, Smith Street, uh, I'm sorry, Laurel Street Dog Park Improvement Update. Presenta, City Manager has done the staff report and presentation by Engineer Dave Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Per the direction we received from the City Manager, we, uh, we have prepared a, um, a rendering for some improvements to our existing dog park that's off of Laurel Street. The, uh, the improvements encompass an area approximately, uh, an acre in, in size. Provides for, and the rendering's in your packet, it provides for separate small and large dog park areas. So separate the, the larger and the, and the smaller dogs from each other. Both areas are fenced and landscaped with, uh, trees and bushes and turf. Um, the areas also include concrete walkways, benches, and a main concrete entry feature uh, to enter into either the large or the small dog park area. The main dog park activity occurs on the gentle side slopes of the basin. So all those big green turf areas that you see are on the side slopes of the basin. But if, if you're familiar with, uh, with, with that basin, they are very gentle. They're not, they're not steep at all. The, uh, the improvements are expected to cost about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There's a detailed cost estimate in your, in your packet. The improvements will not affect the, uh, the storm drainage functions of the basin. So we'll still be able to use it as a storm drain basin. Uh, our landscape architect is on the Zoom, uh, Mr. Patrick Boyd, and, uh, him and I would both be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, um, the, the Community Services Commission, um, have a dog park subcommittee that has been working on this for a long time. And, um, so all of this right here, Alex, has, have they seen this?
Uh, they have not. They haven't, uh, had a meeting yet since we received this, uh, this plan. Just a little background, some of, some of which is, is in the staff report is, um, the council discussed this item on the eighteenth. There was some conversation obviously about the former location at Erling Park and ultimately council gave direction, uh, to bring back some cost estimates to, uh, to approve Laurel. In doing that, I went back and looked at the minutes of, uh, the Community Services Group and that Subcommittee's group um, with regards to, um, the improvements that they wanted to see. We also held a number of, uh, public meetings through, um, our Prop sixty-eight grant process. So we, um, those included areas such as Athol Park, um, but also the dog park was a part of that too. So I tried to incorporate, uh, a lot of those comments, uh, give that direction to Dave and, and to Pat, um, with regards to this. But, um, ultimately, uh, wanted to get this back in front of you guys first and, and certainly if you'd like to, um, kick it back down to the Community Service, uh, Commission, um, for their comment. Um, that, um, shouldn't be an issue. It's a little, I know it's a little chicken and egg, so.
I just know they've, they've worked really hard on this.
Yes.
And they've been part of this since the beginning, um, some more than others, especially the, the Dog Park Subcommittee. And, um, I want to make sure that they understand it. Because if we're moving forward on something and they haven't seen it, that, I think that's important because we, we are asking them to invest a lot of time and their expertise to, to be part of this, um, not only the commission, but, you know, we have these subcommittees to look at this. Um, and I know another piece of this, why they really wanted to see this done was safety. And if you've taken your dogs out there, safety is a huge issue. And so, um, so safety first. And then to see, um, at, at, once they've had a chance to look at that as well, to see if that's something that they're envisioning as well. So I, I want to work hand in hand with the Community Services Commission as well. So that's why I just want to make sure that we are including them in what we're, we're doing.
And we haven't met, and I think, believe in about three months. Believe we're supposed to meet in October. Is that?
Could be.
We're waiting? Okay.
Okay. Because I mean, you can always have the subcommittee just send it to the subcommittee too. Doesn't have to be the full commission as well. I just, like I said, I, when you, I mentioned it to one of the commen, commissioners, they're like, what are you talking about? And don't involve as well.
Any other council discussion on this?
I'm curious to see how much it would cost to just have a fenced green space and then we can gradually build. Just by looking at it, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Just curious how much we can cut that down if we're going to have just have a fenced green space? Because that's my concern is where this money is going to come from.
Impact fees and Prop sixty-eight?
Arpa funds?
A phased approach as well?
So that's what we did with Athol.
Exactly. So like main idea and exactly what you said. So we're not just throwing all the money down and needing.
What are we looking at for infrastructure?
Yeah, we've got all that broken out so we can, you can kind of pare it down. Yeah.
And some items on the list are already there, like the water fountain, some of the benches. I did notice that.
And maybe the work of the Community Services Commission and the, um.
The Subcommittee?
Dog Park Committee. What they could do is, is phase that appro, phase that for us.
That's what we did with Athol too, was we had them.
Do that work and then bring it to us and say, this is how we kind of think. And where is the money going to come from and what grants are available? So let them do that. Legwork a little bit and then bring it back with more solid. Leg work a little bit and then bring it back with more solid.
I think we're absolutely going in the right direction and getting it back to what is a dog park, taking it out of neighborhoods. I very much like that approach.
It's also been since 2014 though, since we've been, we, we are supposed to do something there. And, and I think it keeps getting kicked back or let's do this, let's do that. And then when it comes down to money, I know when we directed staff, it was at some point, we have to put our money where our mouth is if we're not going to provide Erling Park. When we were talking to all of the residents in your district and they said, tell us how much and we're going to help figure it out also. So I think that phased plan or sitting down and figuring it out, we need to do something because it's been what, seven years? Almost eight years.
We'll be on the hook for the infrastructure no matter what. You know, some of these other things, if somebody wants to adopt a tree, put in there, adopt a bench, I mean, there's always those kinds of options.
It's awesome.
How much are we even talking about? It's, it is a park. It's not what we necessarily desire if it is a park, but what the dogs want is they need greasings and irrigation.
And the fencing is terrible there.
Even with, with irrigation, I was talking to him about looking at, talking to our local irrigation companies to see if, even if they would donate, you know, helping, you know, put that in for us, whether it's the, the parts or even the labor or whatever, that would help us out a lot too. Because that's expensive. Because we do have irrigation companies around here that might want to help us out and people that live here in town.
And they, I know that subcommittee has done that.
Yeah. So there's other things too. So just like what we did with Athol, I think going back and it's a very active group, the Community Services Commission, Mr. The Dog Park People, kind of all are. So have them say, if we had this as a minimum and for phase one, this as a, for phase two and phase three, and then we can break that down to look at how much that would cost. I think that would give us an idea of.
And I want to know, even, even if we're talking about a smaller amount, $150,000, I, I need to know where that money is coming from. That's, that's my concern. If we have money set aside for parks, that's where it's going, sorry. But if we're pulling from somewhere else, that's where.
Said 189,000 right now we have from Prop 68, but we're still waiting to hear back on additional?
Yeah. So we have 185,000, I think, but there are some caveats with how that can be used. In Prop 68, it has to go towards specific, you know, communities or otherwise it can only be on match or it can't be used 100%. So there is that portion. We are waiting on Prop 68 for a few projects, including this one. Council has the option to utilize some impact fee funds, essentially a new facility. We believe that ARPA funds will be eligible, but I, we're recommending waiting until the final rule comes out because there's just an interim rule. So waiting until the treasury releases that information entirely before committing to anything. So, you know, I, I, there are some options. I think it's a matter of, you know, either getting that information or having the council set a budget as to what they're comfortable with in terms of the first phase. And so I, I think that that will be potentially a question that the Community Services Commission asks is, okay, we can do it in phases, but what's our budget in a phase, right? So what, I mean, maybe I guess we can ask them, what's a minimal, what's the minimal amount of what you'd want to see there? And that, that answer probably differs from commission member to commission member, but happy to work with them.
So council, are you comfortable with sending this back to Community Services Commission with that direction before it comes officially before us again? I think look and see what the minimum, like he said, what the minimum would be. And it's laid out right there. Like the amount, it's itemized.
And I'm just, I just kind of want to clarify, it sounds like maybe your priority was more on the landscaping part of it and not so much on the hardscape and amenities that go with that or?
Well, yeah, I mean, that would be mine, but I think that's, that's where we have the committee members to see what they would want to do first if they're going to want to break it down in phases. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
I just want to see a way that we could phase this together in pieces.
Yeah, it's, it's, the phasing's, you know, a lit, a little, a little tricky and, and Pat, our landscape architect is online. So he can jump anytime he wants. But you know, I mean, you kind of need this much space if you can have a lar, large dog area. You can't just cut the space in half, you know? And, and so, I mean, one thing we could do is maybe, you know, lose the small dog space and do that as a second phase. A lot of the irrigation stuff, you.
So I think when I was talking about phasing anyway, I wasn't talking about breaking it up. I was talking about phase one being irrigation.
Right.
$150,000 to get our foundation correct.
Build from there.
Or, or germination or whatever it's called. That's what I meant by phases.
Gotcha.
Same one project. I love your design of the whole thing. I just want to pay for it in phases.
Makes sense. Makes sense. Yeah. You know, it makes sense. Yeah.
Driving on the freeway, like who wouldn't want to get off the freeway and take their dog right there, right? It would totally change it.
Away. Because so many people do, you know, ride on, you know, drive on the, on Highway 99 with their animals. And so to know they could get off in a safe place, you know, let their dog out. And then if we can get a charging station there, they could even walk over while one person, you know, with the dog, they could go over to Denny's or to the, there's a Mexican restaurant there and then whatever they're going to do at Sinclair, grab some food, come back, you know, while their car's charging, plus their dog's out. So it's a, to make it another reason for people to come to Kingsburg and get off in Kingsburg, I think will be, you know, really nice. Right now, nothing to advertise.
Do you have direction? Is that? Okay. Thank you. Item six point four, crime statistics report for the month of September 2021 and general police department update. Crime statistics report prepared by Karina Padilla and presentation by Police Chief Neil Dadian.
Good evening again, Mayor North, members of the council. Let me just start by introducing Police Administrative Assistant Miami Ploge. She's with me tonight. I've been dragging her to all sorts of things, government related, not just law enforcement related, but government related. And tonight was a good night to do that. So I will have her and a number of new reserve police officers, volunteers and professional staff and police officers before the council in November, December, January, probably February. We're breaking it up by smaller groups because I have about a dozen or more to present to the council. So you'll get a chance to learn a little bit more about Miami then. Still concerned about some of the catalytic converter thefts and thefts from unlocked vehicles that still plagues us from the last couple of months. They've slowed a little bit, but we're still seeing them. We have, our detectives met last week with detectives from other law enforcement agencies in the area and they were trying to put together some information. We did, I think it was the Parler Police also made an arrest a few weeks ago. So we're trying to see if some of that information will work out on some of our cases. But you know, I pay attention to that stuff because somebody woke up, had their vehicle basically damaged to the tune of several thousands of dollars, you know, and then things couldn't happen, right? They couldn't go to work on time. They couldn't get the kids to school on time. They're expensed to rent a car or get rides or something like that, you know? So I mean, that, these are important things. Same thing, we've had a couple more vehicle thefts than we normally have. And so I'm paying attention to that as well. But this is kind of the season where that occurs and I just understand that. Doesn't mean I like it or accept it. And so we're working on some of those things to see if we can get in front of them. We also have a little bit of an update on the shooting case. I told you we make, this is the one that happened in April 10th in Cody Lane. Three suspects, we did arrest all three suspects. We are gathering some digital evidence and we've had that case in front of the DA's office with their oversight and we're getting ready to submit that one and work on going to trial for that. The homicide on eight, on 18th Avenue from August is still being investigated. And I gave you an update last time. The sheriff's office is still working on it. They're still working on it. So I don't have anything more to offer on that. I did mention a couple of meetings ago, we have been working a cold case homicide from about 12 years ago. That's my detectives and some contract detectives that I hired retired sergeants from the sheriff's office. And you got a chance to meet them at Swedish Festival when they were given an award for another cold case. But they're still working on that and hoping to finalize that one by the end of the year as well. Our school resource officer has been busy last few weeks. He's participated in the upcoming events last week at the high school. This week, yesterday as a matter of fact, we conducted a undercover sting operation with our partners from the sheriff's office here in Kingsburg and the surrounding areas. And we did, we did get one undercover buy of tobacco related products here in Kingsburg and then in some of the surrounding areas in the unincorporated businesses around Kingsburg. We also participated in the high school wellness fair today and discuss the negative effects of tobacco use and tobacco products. And then I think he's also scheduled to meet later on with the Lions Club sometime later this month with a public presentation. I have three trainees in the field training program doing well. I, after you have approved my recruit position tonight, I will be making a job offer tomorrow to another candidate that I've been recruiting in the police academy in Fresno. And we'll get him on board. He's actually scheduled to graduate the week before Thanksgiving. So a couple of weeks in that position and then we'll transition him to a police officer position shortly thereafter. Last, it was last month, September 25th, I was at the Tulare Kings Basic Police Academy in Hanford along with Officer Villanueva, Officer Gonzalez, and Officer Gomez. We went there, did some recruiting. So I've already had some conversations with an officer or a, I'm sorry, a student who's interested in that. She, she and I had a conversation today. She's former military and, and you know, with, although she has some education, that'd be a good candidate for one of the recruit positions. And we participated in the Celebrate Kingsburg event in Memorial Park that day. That was on September 25th. We're increasing our social media presence. As I mentioned, I just got mildly but politely scolded about the event that we had here earlier. And I didn't loop her in on that. So you were right. She's, she knows how to take care of people and get them in line. So that was pretty cute. So she is, it's Hallie Sombreski, who's a volunteer and, and she's really taken the reins on this and done quite a good job. And we also have Myra Boland who will be assisting her and she's just coming online as well. So looking to have a better social media presence and, and share some of the positive things that are going on out there in our, our kind of in basket with law enforcement and, you know, helps with our community outreach. I wanted to touch on AB 89, which kind of relates to the recruit position we had tonight. And just to let you know, I'm probably going to have some things that, moving forward to try and get in front of that. So AB 89 is titled, the Peace Officers Minimum Qualification. And what this has to do, the legislature earlier this year basically crafted some legislation where they're, they're looking to up the standards for peace officers. So what they came up with was at least 21 years of age at the time of appoint, at the time of appointment, which is our standard anyway. I mean, previously by penal code definition, you only had to be 18. Now it's 21 across the board. There are some exceptions to that, but it wouldn't apply to municipal policing. So the essence of it is the legislature has directed the post commission, stakeholders from law enforcement, the California State University to work with the chancellor's office from the California Community Colleges to develop a modern policing degree program. And they want that done by June 1 of 2023. So a little over a year and a half from now. The the essence of that is they want to incorporate a number of things into that two-year degree. So, and what they're really looking to do is have all law enforcement officers have a degree or there are some military exceptions here, or if you already have a bachelor's degree in, in any discipline, that's going to be allowed. But you know, they have a, they have kind of a heavy lift in front of them because it's not going to be easy for them. So after that June 2023 deadline, that's when they have to have a report to the legislature and then a product two years later, which kind of runs it out to June 1 of 2025, 2025, before any of this goes into effect. So what I'm going to be doing is getting our minimum qualifications and our job standards in line with that ahead of time so that when that date comes, we're not behind the curve, we're in front of the curve. And, and it's, I'm going to probably stair step that up along the way. So that's why I started with 30 college units for the recruit position because I'm going to up the minimum qualifications to 30 college units for police officer. And then I'll up that again at a later point. So again, it's, you know, just flip the switch at once. So we don't lose folks who are, you know, maybe not, don't have that level of education, but would be good candidates. One of the things I really push is education and we're working with, I've been working with the city manager to come up with ways to kind of incentivize that. But I have a lot of, you know, people I hire who don't have a college degree, I have a handshake deal with them that that's something that they're going to get because that was, while it's not an official condition of hire, that's something that is important for me and for our police department and our police officers to have. So I, I have this handshake deal with people and I expect them to keep the word and I'm going to work with them to do that. So I have all kinds of contacts in the education world. And there's a lot of degree programs that are available for not only police officers, but professional staff to get educated along the way. So I'm going to be look, working with all of our job classes to make sure that we meet these minimum qualifications that are coming, we're ahead of that curve and that, you know, we're not, we're not left behind because we're still going to be recruiting people five years from now. We're going to still have that need. So I want to make sure that, that we're getting the best candidates that we possibly can for our positions that, that come available. And then the last thing I have, touch on this. I just wanted to reinforce my relationship with the council. And this is apropos of nothing, but you know, when I, I first came to the council, it seemed like I had a lot of challenges and, you know, a lot of things to fix, which we did. And I mean, Councilmember Roman, you were there and you remember, it was, it just, it just seems like it was one thing after another. And for a couple of years, that was the situation. And now I, I come and, and things aren't bad. Things are pretty good. But I don't want you to get the impression that I'm just giving you a Christmas card once a month, right? Things are that rosy and things are wonderful. We have crime, we have problems. We have things that we have to work on. But I don't look at anything that it's insurmountable. It's just, just a challenge to be overcome. So I, I just want to make sure that, that you know that I'm available to you anytime. If you want to go in depth on something, a particular investigation or something that is, you have a question about, I'm happy to do that. I'll give you whatever information I can. If it's an investig, open investigation, I have some limits on that. But if it's something organizational, I'm happy to sit and discuss that with you at any time. So I just want to make sure that, that. that with you at any time. So I just want to make sure that, that you know I'm available to do that. So I don't want to, again, feel like I'm giving you a Christmas card all the time. Because when I, when I first started doing this for the first couple of years, as I said, it was, it just seemed like it was, you know, one challenge after another. And, and that has, that has switched. But, you know, we still have challenges in front of us and we're still, still going to overcome those challenges. So anyway, I will leave it at that, available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief.
I just have one question.
Challenges, but for sure you, you know, persevere through everything and I appreciate the policies, policies you've put in place and everything that you've been doing and what you provide to us that we never, we never had this before you came along to have these updates, which I really appreciate. And so the transparency that I feel from your department has been second to none. And I know any of us can go in and sit with you or anybody on, on your team and your staff. It has been great. So I just, for me, not only as a resident, but sitting up here, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. And, and, you know, transparency is a big buzzword these days. And I don't want to, I don't want to dive deep into that, but it's important that you know, or you get, you get answers to questions that you have, whatever those happen to be. And if it's, I don't know everything. So if it's, I'm not the person, I will put you in front of the person who can answer those questions. Because the cops out there in the field know a whole lot more about this than I do. Sir, you had a question?
I have a question, Chief. Have you had any officers arrest people with fentanyl? Is it, you know, is there a fentanyl around Kingsburg? Because I don't know. I'm just curious.
Yes, there is. There is fentanyl everywhere. The sheriff's office just hauled in a load of it earlier this week. A massive load. And so, and we're not exempt. So, yeah, we, we, we come across it. We experience it.
You know if it's mostly with adults or is it youth also?
Um, yeah, it affects our youth. I could, I can't give you chapter and verse at the moment. I mean, again, that's something I can do some research and get back to you if you want to know, you know, how many juveniles or something we've arrested. But, you know, if that's the case, please let me know. But, yeah, it affects all, all age ranges.
You had a question last council meeting about Narcan, didn't you, with officers?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you for reminding me. When Chief Perkles, I asked him, you know, and I had a feeling they did, that all the fire trucks and ambulances carry the Narcan. Do you have, do the police officers carry Narcan in their, you know, in their cars or?
On them.
On them?
On them.
They do? Okay, great.
On them. And you need it, you need it right there.
Yeah. That's good to know, yeah. For our citizens, you know, just, just in case somebody may need it.
Any other council discussion or questions? Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks for your time.
Job, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Item seven, council reports and staff communication. Seven point one, Community Services Commission, we have not met. Seven point two, Public Safety Committee.
We meet next month.
Seven point three, Chamber of Commerce.
Uh, last month's meeting was canceled.
Seven point four, Economic Development. Seven point five, Finance Committee. Seven point six, Planning Commission. Our meeting was canceled. This is quick. Seven point seven, SKGSA.
Our meeting was also canceled.
Seven point eight, Downtown Business Improvement District.
We met, um, this week, last week. We met. This one was not canceled. We met and they just gave a social media update. So they've been doing, they're working that from within the board. So two of the board members have taken that over. And they're doing an excellent job. I don't know if any of you follow them on Instagram, but they're doing daily stories and they have a really great calendar that they put together. So since they've been doing that, they've been getting some more interaction on not just the page, but people obviously coming into their stores. And they were also able to secure thanks to Abby, the trolley, the dollar trolley for their holiday event. I believe it's an open house, holiday, November sixth. I'm not sure what it's called though, but it's a holiday open house.
I think there'll be a fire coming out soon.
Holiday kickoff, right?
Something like that. Yeah, something like that. So, you know, staying busy over there.
Thank you. Seven point nine, nine, sorry, Council of Governments.
We'll meet the end of the month.
Seven point ten, City Council Member Reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
I just wanted to provide an update about the crosswalk there at Avenue A and Lindquist. So at our last meeting, we had a member from my district, a constituent, who was talking about the need of a crosswalk there. And that's been brought up for years. We, we know about that. And, and so I wanted to make sure, because I know he brought it up to us and staff took that direction and they've been working really hard on making sure that that can be made a reality. However, one side of the street doesn't have, it's not ADA compliant because it doesn't have, I don't know what it would be called, curb ramp?
Ramp.
So I spoke with our Public Works Director this week and he reassured me that that project is being worked on. It's going to go to bid. We are going to make that happen. It's going to come out of a sidewalk, sidewalk repair fund. And so that crosswalk will happen. I just wanted to provide that update. And I lost the man's phone number. So if you have it, Alex, I would.
I have it.
Okay, perfect. Or I could go knock on the door. But I just wanted to save that over the live stream so people know that that is upcoming, you know, sometime soon. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
So on October tenth, Councilmembers Hurtado and Palomar joined me at the, the race, the big city of Kingsburg horse race. And it was against Selma and Sanger. And I just liked to let everybody know, we won. Sounds good, right? I think it was official, but we'll just say we did. So that was nice to be able to go down there and help present the trophy. The mayor of Sanger was also there with us. Nobody from Selma, but it was nice to be down there on that day and have fun all together. And then over the last few weeks, I've been participating over at the Train Depot. We've been having all the third grade classrooms come back for our tours. So it's been a lot of fun dressing up again and welcoming kids back once again for field trips. I know all the volunteers and myself, we've missed seeing all the kids at the depot. So we've had all the classrooms come through except for two. We'll finish up next Wednesday. So it's been fun having everybody there. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All good? Okay, seven point eleven, City Managers Report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council. Included in your packet this evening, last week, we received official notification from the Fresno County Clerk, Registrar of Voters, James Kuss, who declared the petition to recall Councilmember Hurtado insufficient for lack of valid signatures. So that ends their attempt towards that recall. So I just wanted to give that official update. And then just today, we received a request from the elementary district, from Mrs. Zambreski, asking the council to support bilingual students day, which is occurring on November third, which is the same night as our, our next council meeting. So wanted to, obviously came up today, so didn't have a chance to get it on the agenda and it's occurring before our next meeting. So see if the council wanted to provide a letter of support for that. And I'm happy to send along that request as well. But I wanted to bring that up for you guys this evening, see if you had any direction on that.
Fifteen students are getting reclassified. They're, from their primary language. They have passed all of the assessments and coursework to say that they're fluent in English. So it's called redesignation.
Providing a letter of support. I think they're having a specific, they're having a, an evening for them. So the council doesn't do usually individual proclamations or things like that based upon those requests, but.
Like a congratulations.
Yeah, if you gave a direction, then Mayor North can put together a, you know, a letter of support, similar to like we do for, you know, letters to Sacramento or things like that. So, but I'm happy to provide the actual request to you guys after the meeting so that you can provide some feedback. Do you have more information on it?
Yes. Michelle? Yes? Okay. Do we need to make a motion or just direction? Okay, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I have nothing listed under future agenda items. Nine, the City Council regular meeting will adjourn out of regular calendar into closed session. For nine point one, Conference with Labor Negotiators.